Also, Bruce, we don't know where he is, but he'll be back. Okay, this is a, Maggie, you ready? This is a joint meeting of the Cultural and Environmental Learning Center Advisory Board, also known as Cell Cab. It is 2:41 on Thursday, May 9th, and our meeting is called to order. If everyone would please go around the table and introduce yourselves. Barbara, you want to start?
Barbara Hill, I'm chair of the Cell Cab.
Remember to talk into the microphone. If you don't hear yourself, they don't hear you either.
Did you hear me? Okay. Now? Okay. Barbara Hill, Chair of the Cell Cab.
Ray Murphy.
Betty Simpson, Cell Cab.
Joanne Champ.
Rexanne Haasifrost.
Cindy Richardson.
Seal Spula.
Sherry Smith.
Bruce Butcher.
Allison Geeson.
Anita Saraceta. Okay, go ahead, Barbara.
It is terrific that we all can meet with the advisory board, I mean, well, our advisory board can meet with the town council members. I want to take this time to thank both the town of Fort Myers Beach, the staff, and certainly our town council for being so supportive and leading the mound house to the excellent success that we've had over the last three and a half years that the mound house has been open to the public. We've made enormous strides due to this commune effort and our ability to get things done. Cell Cab, really, because of Allison's leadership, our job has been very easy by comparison to what it had been in the past as we struggled to get this mound house completed. So with that, we actually have an opportunity today to kind of update our goals and our objectives, which were outlined in our strategic plan, and hopefully the council can agree to some of the recommendations that we've now made as a result of putting together our new vision, our mission statement, and specifically, you know, updating the items that were first listed in the resolution that we want to have changed and updated. So with that, I think we can basically, at this point, have a conversation about the resolution 513. And I believe that might be in your packet?
Yes.
Okay, and so you'll see the parts that are highlighted as to the issues that need to be addressed.
The highlighted, the highlighted areas, Barbara, are what Cell Cab is looking for. Cell Cab has made a suggestion or is going to make a suggestion to the council for change. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So should we go?
Yeah, the first one here is on Marine Limited on the dock, right?
Correct. Right. Okay, so it says dock for water use, for use by water taxi or water shuttle, limited use as a destination only. This was written before we put the observation deck in, and obviously, we had the fishing dock that was original, but then the observation deck dock area is what was added. We just want to make sure that the council recognizes the issues here with regard to what we recommend, and we have that in Attachment B.
That is for this page.
Attachment, yeah.
Right, on, yes, okay, page three.
You have that, yes. You will read the recommendation for, yes.
Okay, right here, this is on, okay, right, so.
So Marine Limited, do you see right there?
Yes, Marine Limited, okay, so, oh, well, let's go back, actually, it's before, it's all proposed non-sponsored events. So let's, it's not actually the dock that we have to go back to, page, this is still the third page, these are numbered pages, but.
That one's not highlighted.
It's, right, but all proposed events, mine, mine is highlighted, it says all proposed events on premises consumption of alcohol beverages must apply for and receive a permit for the service of alcohol beverages in accordance with 34-2442 permits for special events. So our recommendation, which then says.
Just if you could, that section is not highlighted in our packet. And it's, it is on the same page as Marine Limited Dock Retail One, it's not numbered.
Exactly.
But it is the, yes, it's number two, okay.
So getting back to what our suggestions are for the amendments to this resolution, we are suggesting that it says all proposed non-sponsored events with on-premise consumption of alcohol beverages must apply for and, and receive a permit for the service of alcohol beverages in accordance with 34-2442 permits and special events. So maybe, should we just go point by point with each one?
Yeah, look, if you want, Allison, you want to explain that?
So, yes, Allison Geeson, the special events policy, the operations and special events policy that is in, that refers to this resolution, the mound house operational special events policy has a recommendation for defining sponsored and non-sponsored events. For exa, for example, Friends of the Mound House has a lecture series, we have it inside the museum. Is that to have the same restrictions as a wedding party who wants to be out on the grounds, who is not associated with the organization? The Community Foundation had their award ceremony there if they wanted to work in conjunction with the mound house or the Fort Myers Beach Film Festival. All of the organizations that mound house collaborates with, that we have deemed as part of our mission and our statement in our strategic plan, the question would be, are we under the same restriction as an outside party going through, because that's what's happening now?
I, I agree with you, but, but that, the way it has been is that every single thing that's ever happened there has to have a permit.
Correct.
They wanted to formalize, formalize that?
Because if, if it is anything in the resolution after the hours, the normal business hours of the museum, I am required to get a special event permit, whether there's alcohol or not. So there's certain restrictions, because the site has been utilized now for over four years, and this was done in '05, to revisit and update as it does deem say to do, if you'd be open to those kind of suggestions to streamline the process.
Are you talking about non-alcoholic events?
No, our lecture series has, we serve wine, and it's inside the museum, so there would be some that would be, that would serve alcohol to our members that we've done, that we would be wanting to open up for discussion on.
I, I think you have a legal issue here with your, this is a resolution.
Correct.
A resolution can't negate an ordinance. So if the ordinance says, if our special event ordinance says you have to do X, Y, Z, a resolution can't, it can't, what's word I'm looking for?
Supersede.
Trumpet.
Yeah, that's, that's not the word I was looking for.
But, but it works.
But I guess it's the definition of what a special event is, though. Is a special event, I think that's what it is, because this refers to the special event. So is a special event, if you're holding something that's mound house sponsored, it's inside, to me, that's not a special event, but if it's outside.
If the public is invited.
Yeah.
And it's outside our normal business hours, right. Yeah. So you're saying, Roxanne, there's no.
I agree with what you want to accomplish, you just, I don't think you can accomplish it in this document.
Yeah. Well, then I need direction on how.
Can you make amendments to it?
I, I have asked to put on agenda management today that we redefine our special events ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And I think that's the place that we need to take care of that.
And maybe, Allison, you could get with Roger and say what wording you would propose to put in the special events if we modify it that works for the mound house, so you would have your own little something or other, let's say, maybe that's what we do.
Okay.
And for Newton House, too, I don't know.
In the, the spirit of this is that in the operation of, if Allison decides there's going to be a lecture series at the mound house to promote Indian bone discovery, that shouldn't be a special event.
I agree.
Yeah, so you, but you agree in theory to that?
I agree with what you're trying to accomplish, I just can't do it here.
Okay, do you agree in theory to that, Joanne? And you agree, Ray? Do you agree, Bruce?
Well, I'm a little confused about the alcohol thing, because I don't understand our ordinances about alcohol.
What does alcohol have to do with it?
Because that's what it says.
I know, but if you agree in principle that something that the mound house is planning, it's not an outside thing, then that's just, it's organized by the director, period.
I have no problem with that, with the caveat of, I don't understand what the consequences are of the alcohol thing, if it has alcohol.
But I think that we all understand that the original intent of this was to help assist the neighborhood, keep its integrity.
Sure.
And so, and I know that you'll continue to think of your special events and their impacts and define which ones really aren't creating that impact that the neighbors may not appreciate as much as compared to ones that they really do want to see in the public's hearing, something that may impact them. I think that's the defining.
Yeah, I agree. So we'll let you work that particular out with Roger taking into consideration what Roxanne, Roxanne said.
I think we need to save the whole discussion for later, because we can't accomplish it. Yeah.
Right.
Let's move on.
Roger has a.
Yeah, just, just to, just to step back for one second. So we had this facility, has all this potential, and we're sort of handcuffing ourselves to some degree, perhaps, to make sure that we don't have, we're not bad, we don't have bad behavior.
Have bad neighborhood relations. So I think what Allison and the committee are trying to recognize is, is that we're not going to do that. We're not going to do something that's bad for the neighbors, but we still need to try to see the facility through, to its, to its potential. That being said, there are, there are laws for off-premises alcohol that we all have to obey. We have a process for that. If you're having alcohol off-premises, whether you're the mound house or you're some restaurateur, there's a process for you to follow. So we have to understand what that means, but the question is, is that if that person didn't have to do anything special, should the mound house have to do anything special? And I think the, the answer I'm hearing today is no.
Right.
So just to be clear on the question that Council Butcher was bringing up, that to the extent that the state says to, to serve alcohol, you have to do certain things, we're not saying those things go away because we're the town or we're the mound house. We're saying that those things would still need to adhere to, but, but we don't have to do anything special that anyone else wouldn't have to do, I guess, is the way I would say it.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
And again, based on what Rexanne was concerned about, these recommendations, while we may not be able to do that in the term of resolution, but it would be something that would actually have to be revised as far as the ordinance is concerned, I think we can still go through these steps, saying that this is the intent of Cell Cab and staff for the council to work on.
Absolutely. Sure.
Great, okay. Going next to the Marine recommendation, we just read that, but under the recommendation that we have for suggestions, two hours mooring limited for mound house visitors, only during hours the site is open to the public, which, which is deemed sunrise to sunset, which is year-round. Does everyone agree that that's a good improvement to make to our resolution and our ordinance?
Could you repeat it?
You have a need for that, Allison?
Okay, yes, because right now, the, the hours of operation in, in this says 8:00 AM, we have people there at sunrise. They want to utilize the property, and we have sunrise to sunset to accommodate the demand for the usage of residents in that neighborhood and on the island. So, one, the hours are, are currently not correct, is what it states here. The other is water taxis unfortunately don't come to the dock, so we have people who are in the mooring field, actually, every year. She comes down and she moors at the dock and she visits the mound house. People are excited that it is available by boat. However, this does not say that it is, it's used for water taxi or water shuttle, and I just want to make sure that people have an hour of mooring so they don't spend all day and go down to Publix and come back, because we have had issues with bay boats thinking that they can utilize our dock to go to the store, which I, that would be great, but really, it's just for our visitors to the mound house to access. So those are some of the updates that have, have been taking place on just the natural usage of the site.
And I do believe we have sunset to sunrise at Newton Park as well.
Correct.
So there is that consistency, and again, it just further clarifies how that dock is to be used. So is everyone in agreement that that?
So the change would allow a two-hour limitation for dockage at the dock?
Correct.
Makes sense.
I have a question, why is it only two hours?
Because you don't want somebody parking there all day.
Well, I think that we should allow, the mound house, they may, I don't know if they bring something in that they want it there all day, or it's, it's not in conflict with someone else to stay there two and a half hours, so I think that, you know, the way we should do it is that it can be used for that purpose, and the hours are to be set by the mound house. You go in and check in at the mound house and with the staff, and they say, you could stay for two hours or four hours or three hours, or, I don't know where we're, we're sort of putting that in the code. This would be really an operational decision of the mound house, unless, you know, you want to start two hours and, I don't know, who's going to say two and a half is too much, or an hour and a half, or whatever.
I agree with that. That should actually be an operational decision based on circumstances, so I'm comfortable having that.
So if I have a sailboat that's been there for.
You could post it. In other words, right now, you may say, in the off-season, maybe it's four hours, in the season, maybe it's an hour, I don't know.
Because to enforce anything with code enforcement, if I do put a call in to say, there's a sailboat that's been here, we have a boat tour in, we have two slips, they need to get off one of the slips, or I have my reserve sign, how would I enforce that? So that's really important in the wide, the two hours.
Well, and the resolution wouldn't make it enforceable, to go to the council's point earlier, but I think that, you know, the wording I would suggest, and we could work together to do it, would be as posted.
Okay.
So that, however, as posted, that's what.
As a minute change when, yeah, because we do have signs when we have reserve for boat tour, you know, so that would be.
I like that, because then it can be modified according to how staff.
According to season.
Yep.
So mooring limited for mound house visitors as posted, only during hours the site is open to the public. Wonderful. Okay, moving on to retail. We're looking at, let's go back to the temporary uses, do we have that one? Only with appropriate permit issued by the town. And here we have a prim, issued by the town for non-sponsored events. And you want to clarify that, Allison?
Right, and I did in the, in the beginning of the non-sponsored versus the sponsored, same thing.
Okay, so that's the same issue, just to be consistent.
Right, and the two hours, again, I mean, some events are going to go over two. We've been really good to clear the property by nine, some setup is done after nine, but whatever event as far as amplification noise, but then I also question, what do other properties get to do? If we had something that went till 9:30, would that be okay? Nine o'clock right now has not been an issue. Usually, everything ends, and then they have an hour to quietly clean up and vacate, but it's not been, it's not been an issue for that.
Okay, so what are you asking us to do with, with this particular temporary uses?
So it would be to.
Make it consistent with the, with the.
Yes, with the non-sponsored.
The non-sponsored events.
Which was, what was, Roxanne was talking about.
Okay. The issue of alcohol beverages, to Bruce's point, with regard to limited to beer and wine, that's what it currently states, and we are suggesting to include alcohol, which is obviously beer and wine. I don't think the intent was to have, you know, margarita parties, or, you know, I think there, there was some, there was some ambiguity as to what Cell Cab was deeming appropriate. I think originally, we were talking about just beer and wine being appropriate, but I'm thinking you were actually thinking that there might be a little more latitude with regard to mixed drinks.
Yes, I mean, there are, I, program ideas to help raise money for the mound house, like vintage cocktails and different things, so, you know, does that mean that we could not apply and have any kind of alcohol? Question mark, because this says we would not be able to. Period. So I wanted to explore what that would be, or if somebody wanted to have an event, a wedding, and have an open bar, would that be a no-no with this?
And, and when, for example, we have a gala at, on the grounds, and we have a wonderful tent, and we have a $300 a ticket gala that is like black tie, and you would want to be able to serve martinis, so you bring in the big dollars for sponsorships to support the mound house going forward.
I love martinis.
Right?
Just, just love them.
I mean, those, those kinds of conversations, I think, are a good, that's a good starting point to have here.
This, this beer and wine limitation is puritanic.
You know, you know what it is?
It goes back, this is.
This, it goes back to, it goes back to early mound house days, and there hasn't been a problem, this shouldn't be a problem. It's, it.
No.
We did, we did our, we tried to couch everything in as tightly as possible, and what's happened is, I think the neighborhood should have a comfort level with the mound house right now. Again, it all goes back to the director, you know, if, if, if alcohol's going to get out of hand, it's going to get out of hand with beer and wine, too, so it's, you know.
Yeah, I think that you're exactly right. Your, the original thought was somehow, you know, the beer and wine event was going to be classier and more limited or whatever, but I think that, however it is, that it's understood that the hours are limited, the volume and noise is limited, and the, the quality of the event suits the location, I think that that's, you understand that ambiance and how we continue with that.
That is correct, and anything, any sponsored event, somebody renting the property, as you see the, the guidelines for them to see if they can even get onto the property, there's some that are deemed not suitable for the site.
Right.
And they have looked elsewhere. So that remains to be protected within before it even gets to council, to be able to see if it is an appropriate event for the neighborhood and for the site, because some are not, we're not going to be hosting AC/DC concert there. Some things are just better suited.
Seal and Sherry, you both go say something.
Could be. I just wanted to say, too, that having worked with the, the people on the street now, that of course, the sidewalk issue, and they are totally happy about that, but we don't, we don't have the contention at all that we had back, say, in the 90s and the early 200s.
Absolutely.
We really have, in fact, a lot of them come to the, the mound house and work and volunteer. So we really, I mean, they're very happy to have the mound house down there. So we really don't have, you know, the tension that we had before.
Well, I think this is very important, because we're missing a lot of events that have come to Allison, that she has not been able to do because of the perimeters of this being restricted, and it's like weddings and other things that are, just as Barbara mentioned, and I think we've got to look beyond. If we're going to raise, have the use, since it's on the national registry, we've got to expect that we have more opportunities of what she's going to be able to do.
My, yeah, my son just got married at a national register location in Cleveland, and, I mean, that's what drew us there, it was fabulous, and it was a classy event.
Did they serve alcohol?
Yeah, sure they did. Oh, yeah, I paid the bill.
Oh, yeah.
I paid the bill, I would say, yes.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I'm glad I wanted to bring my cooler.
But seriously, I don't, I don't know what's magical about two hours, and I don't know what's magical about inside or outside, if you have good management, and this, you know, the state has laws governing the, the use and sale of alcohol, that I don't know that we should have any, put any particular restrictions, you know, on the mound house unless it's on a date in the future, which I never, ever anticipate would happen, that someone makes a bad judgment and allows something that shouldn't happen, but, you know, I think that we've proven, we have excellent management out there, we have someone who's very careful to be considerate of neighbors, neighbors, and is aware of what the implications of the vents that might get booked there, and I'm very comfortable with, you know, giving them the flexibility to utilize their property and help, you know, be all it can be.
Okay, let's move on to the next item.
On, again, adding sunrise to sunset for the new hours.
Right.
That's just to be consistent.
Right.
Same thing with the non-sponsored events. So basically, that really.
Oh, no, you've got, you've got office, administrative office? You wanted something?
Barbara Guiman, it's, it says limited to use by staff and contracted agents. I just wanted volunteers to be added. I mean, we have wonderful volunteers, and I didn't know if that was important to put, to add those in, but we do have many volunteers who.
I think volunteers is staff.
Oh, yes, I know, yeah. I didn't know if that was something we really needed to, but yes.
So again, I'll just make the same pitch, you know, if it's a public, publicly owned building, why were we restricted to any, whoever, we allow the public here, why would we restrict the public there? In any way, it's the same, or Bay Oaks, or any of the other town facilities.
So number, number four, the ma, the mound house property, that will go to sunrise to sunset? And. What about this, Allison? The use of the property must be consistent with the operational, did you want to change something about that?
Well, the, the Cell Cab has drafted, which is Attachment B, so if you look one page over.
Right.
This is what this event's policy, what they're proposing.
I, I, I think this is great. I think this is the next, the next phase of the mound house. It steps it up to the level of national registry and recognition.
Professionalizes it.
Exactly.
Right, and just the demands of how the, the public is asking to utilize the property has been something I've been tracking a lot since I've been there, because it has opened up as a, a site in 2015, and, you know, there are certain things that change. This was '05, so.
Right.
It was in process, and it's been a great process, but we have reached kind of a different time period to see what would be appropriate now for usage.
Well, and as everyone has pointed out, the neighbors, which was our primary concern, are fine with how things have been, and we understand that we have to be mindful of their.
Absolutely.
You know, feelings about the mound house and their involvement in the mound house, which is great, as we go forward. I think that we've demonstrated that they are actually now, we're comfortable with them and that they're comfortable with us, and so we're just basically, you know, institutionalizing the, the changes, but professionalizing the operations.
Yeah, question with regard to non-sponsored events, or you call them. I know you just don't like give them the keys and turn over the facility. Just quickly explain what transpires. Let's say I'm having a wedding, what is the proper procedure?
So a wedding would be, you know, work with me to see if we can figure out if it is an appropriate venue, because we, in the, in the agreements, we do have limitations of 200 people on the property. There are limitations that we do just to preserve and just protect integrity of the neighborhood and the site.
And you want that amount to stay the same?
Yes, I mean, I, I've really, we've had 200, I would not want to exceed it.
Yeah.
And I think 150 has even been a better, a better, because, you know, with parking and everything, we need to make sure we're not impacting anything. The ones that we had over 100, you know, they had, the wedding that we had in December, they had the trolley service, it was perfect, because the trolley did, it was, it just worked beautifully, because that was our first beach-to-bay wedding, so they got married on Newton Beach, had cocktail hour, watched the sunset, and then came over to the mound house for dinner and dancing. So it was beautiful, and I think there were ways that we could do that, but staff is always on-site. I am very protective of, of the site. And also, as the director, to be able to logistically see what works and what doesn't work is very important, because these are all events that we're working through, and I've worked at events at other sites, but I am never, usually have beach enforcement. I, myself is there with additional staff to be able to direct traffic, to make sure there's no issues, and then if something, you know, goes wrong.
Will, will the mound house be reevaluating its fee in light of national register as well? I mean, I just know myself what it costs in Cleveland, let's say, to have the right to have my, a wedding in such a facility, and to use both Newton and the mound house, I think is a real honor, and, and you're, a lot of staff time to protect and preserve those locations, so I'm hoping that the fee is significant enough, because people can afford it, should be able to afford it, and, and it is a public property after all.
Yes, I think that that is very appropriate to do. We actually review fees. We actually review fees each year as part of the budgetary process. This one was set for very competitive rates to just kind of see, but you're absolutely right, I think that should be done annually. So we will be doing that. Well, we have, what we do is we do a base rate, because it depends on how much staff time. And so it, we have residents and non-residents for those. It depends on if you just want to have a ceremony and we can do an hourly rate, or we can do a base rate if you have a reception and it's more than.
Average wedding you've done, how much have they paid?
On that one on December, I think with the Newton and Mound House, it was, I think, still very affordable. It was five thousand dollars for both properties.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So.
I just want to make sure it wasn't.
Seal, hold on one second.
No, 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 no.
Cindy, I don't know if you all know, Cindy lives across the canal from the Mound House? And have, and you got asked this question at Cell Cab, so I'm going to ask you again here. If you, if you, do you have any complaints about anything that's happened at the Mound House? And I know you would, you would say that even though we're all friends.
No, we have not had any complaints and we heard a little bit of a mute, very little on the wedding, we hardly hear any of that. And the only time when we did, the beginning of the film, a couple of weeks ago, we filmed in the beginning, it was very loud, so we made sure it was down and then you couldn't, it was, it was fine then.
Great.
No complaints.
Good, Seal.
And that's early in the evening too, it's, yes.
Yeah.
I have a question, I did some of the contact.
Seal, grab the microphone.
I have a question and I don't know about my fellow Cell Cab members, but I'm going to ask it anyway. For years, we've all, whenever we were doing it, friends or anything, had this form to fill out about turtle time, the fire department and everything. With this attachment and everything, does, does Allison have to fill out one of these for every special event?
We are, we're, yeah, we're defining what special event means, but what we have said outside of defining what a special event means, what we've said is that if it's something that the Mound House is doing, a lecture series, or whatever, that's under the purview of the manager. It's not a special event, it's that, but we're also, exactly, it's programs and operations. So that's both yes and no, Seal.
Because the lecture series is kind of a, that's a thing, of course it wouldn't.
That would not require that paper.
But there's going to be other things and that's the things that a lot of us are very concerned. But how to ha, have her handle this, because it's a natural thing, a lecture series is inside. There are going to be things that she will want to do, like out at the reef, we're talking about, she's, you know, having a program or something like that. I'm just giving that as an example, would she have to go to turtle time and, and all that kind of stuff to do that?
It's my understanding, and you all can correct me if I'm wrong, but it would be my understanding that if it is a program or operations that Allison, as the director of the Mound House, is orchestrating, it would be, it would not be a special event. It would not require that paperwork.
And, and you know, we have environmental, she, you know, she can approach environmental and ask.
Right.
Ask Ray or whomever if there's something needs to be done first, but within the operation, it should not.
Did anybody disagree with what I said?
No.
No.
There you go.
We have those turtle time and things built in to Newton Beach Park, because there are events that cannot happen.
Of course.
And so it's already built in to my own internal paperwork.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that was it for the amendments that we recommended to council. Obviously, we've got a lot more paperwork to do according to Drexan in terms of facilitating this, these recommendations. But I think the consensus of both our advisory board and our council and staff is that the recommendations are positive and brings us to two thousand and nineteen from two thousand and five, which is a huge leap for us to get everything up to date.
Just, just so that I'm not misunderstood, I, I believe the first thing you mentioned is the only thing that can't be changed in here. The rest of this, I think you're okay with.
So I can clarify that point, there's, there's two things, one is our special event regulations and, and counselor, you, you've alluded to the fact that, you know, some of this stuff belongs there. This is really the equivalent of a, the zoning use authorization for the Mound House. So based on the conversations today, some things will come out of here and will be addressed in the special event. Modification to the code that the council will contemplate doing. And then certain items will be modified into resolution, which is actually like the Mound House allowed uses. As, as I understand how the process should work.
Yeah.
And, and I think the concern that we have too, is if an individual comes in to speak with Allison about doing a wedding, we don't want there to be such a gargantuan trail of process that they have to follow, that it's so daunting that they say, you know, that's just too much work and we're going.
Do you not do that for them?
So I think the idea of stream work, that special events policy is, is an important recommendation that we have for council to make that as, as swift as possible.
Anything else, Allison?
No, I just appreciate your time and your direction and all your input.
Thank you all for your guardianship of the Mound House. Because you all are the guardians.
Thank you very much.
All right, it's three sixteen PM, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn.
And seconded, and it's three sixteen, we stand adjourned, thank you.
And you guys get the award for fastest.
I'm telling you, right?
Which also makes you the award for most popular.